Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our city with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. And do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law we may show forth thy praise to all people. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness; and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail. All this we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. We open the regular City Council meeting of October 6, 9:30 a.m. Mrs. Vauck, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Old?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mayor Winger?
Here. All right. Agenda additions, deletions, and adoptions.
Yes, Mayor, staff just has one item. We would like to add under the City Manager's Matters. Bureau of Heritage would like to have permission to sell alcohol at one of their events called the Staring Night in the Park, so we will add that on as Item 8 for, under the City Manager's Matters.
Are there further changes or additions?
Motion to approve?
As amended, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five, nothing. Okay, proclamations. Family History Month is...
I have that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Turner. I'm sorry.
Is Mr. Setala here? Wait. You go ahead and read the other one.
All right, well, Ms. Hoffman?
I guess they picked me to read this one. I guess we've got some big words in here. We're definitely glad to see you here this morning.
Thank you.
The proclamation reads that whereas in this complicated world and in these challenging times, the arts and humanities enhance the character of our nation. The flash of insight that comes from watching a thought-provoking documentary or discovering a compelling novel sparks moments of joy, awe, and sorrow. From symphonies that bring tragedy to life with bow and strokes to architecture that challenges the boundaries of the world around it, these works add texture to our lives and reveal something about ourselves. During National Arts and Humanities Month, we reflect on these many ways the arts and humanities have contributed to the fabric of our society. And whereas our nation is built on the freedom of expression and we rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and remind us of the truths that connect us, and by capturing our greatest hope and deepest fears, the arts and humanities plays an important role in telling our country's story and broadening our understanding of the world. And to meet the challenges ahead, we must harness the skills and ingenuity of our children and grandchildren and instill within them the same passion and persistence that has driven centuries of progress and innovation. The arts and humanities provide important opportunities for young children to unleash their creativity and reach for new heights. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2015 as National Arts and Humanities Month in Vero Beach, Florida, and call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our nation and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in our community. Wow.
Good job.
Thank you for reclaiming the month of October 2015, National Arts and Humanities Month. The arts are an important policy asset and prosperity generator for our county. In addition to their inherent value to the society, the arts offer a distinctive blend of benefits. As economic drivers, the arts create jobs and produce tax revenue. A strong arts sector is an economic asset that stimulates the business activity, attracts tourism revenue, and retains a high-quality workforce. The arts have been shown to be successful and sustainable strategy for revitalizing rural areas, inner cities, and populations struggling with poverty. As educational assets, the arts cultivate young imaginations and facilitate success in school, enhancing students' academic achievement in multiple subject areas. They provide the critical thinking, communications, and innovation skills essential to a productive 21st century workforce. In health and wellness, the arts foster physical, mental, and emotional health, aiding recovery processes and contributing to well-being. The arts can be effective tools for achieving and maintaining wellness for aging adults and people suffering from trauma, including military combat personnel and veterans. As civic catalysts, the arts create a welcoming sense of place and a desirable quality of life. The arts also support a strong democracy, engaging citizens in civic discourse, providing forums for important items and issues, and encouraging collective problem-solving. As cultural legacies, the arts preserve culture and heritage, passing along a community's unique character and traditions to future generations of clients, of citizens. To demonstrate the abundance of arts and culture in our community, you have only to look at the fresh-off-the-press 2015-16 Arts and Cultural Guide. This production of the guide is made possible by our 70 advertisers and by the support of the Tourist Development Council. Our online calendar updated daily with new information lists events by the day, by the week, and the month. Together, these calendars are the most comprehensive in Indian River County and have developed in Indian River County. We have delivered a box of guides for you to share with the community, and it'll be in the back of the room. By investing in the arts, we plant seeds for the future and make our communities better places to live, locally as well as nationally. Arts mean business. Thank you.
Ms. Turner?
Just ask, is there anyone from the Genealogy Society here that may be substituting? Okay. Do you want me to go ahead and just read it and then listen to him?
Yes, ma'am.
I will do that. In 2001, Congress first passed a resolution that stated, "By searching our roots, we come closer as a human family." The month of October has come to be celebrated as Family History Month. Since 1983, the Indian River Genealogical Society was established to further genealogical research and promote interest in family and local history. And the Indian River Genealogical Society has consistently assisted and supported the Julian M. Lowenstein Archive Center and Genealogical Department of the Indian River County Main Library. The Indian River Genealogical Society has published books, researched veterans' records, and provided hundreds of lectures, workshops, seminars, educating the public in family history. On Saturday, October 4, the Indian River Genealogical Society brought family history awareness and education to the residents of Indian River County by holding the Second Annual Family History Expo at the Indian River County Main Library. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach does hereby proclaim the month of October as Family History Month and hereby congratulate the society on its work and success in furthering the interest in the legacy of our past. And if it even has an interest in their ancestry, this is an incredible resource for us locally. So if you'd like to do it and get in touch with the Indian River Genealogical Society. I'll pass that to Ms. Vauck. Please send on.
All right, that moves us to public comments. First up is Mr. Wright to discuss the amendment to the OUC contract. Mr. Wright?
Mayor Winger, may I say something before we get started?
Sure.
At the utilities meeting yesterday, their request was that we defer action on this. I think we need to hear it. I think we should discuss it. I don't think it hurts to hear it many, many, many times over, but I would make the motion that we make no action on this today other than to hear Mr. Wright's presentation and have discussion amongst council.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I said yesterday, all I could really say, which is we are viewed as one of the most transparent governments on the East Coast of Florida. And not to have had the Finance Commission take a look at this, I think it has to happen. Mrs...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Following, yeah, the, I realize the Utility Commission did make some recommendations. I did not receive a copy of any of those recommendations, either on my computer or in my box this morning, and I was told we would receive those before the meeting.
I just finished the draft of the motions made. Pass this out.
Thank you.
Mrs. Vauck, let me ask you a question. If we were to ask to have a new joint meeting of these two commissions next Monday, is that a feasible occurrence?
Yes, sir. I have checked the schedules of the Finance Commission and the Utilities Commission, and we do have a quorum on both of those commissions if we choose to hold a meeting on Monday at 9 o'clock.
Well, if that's so, I would propose that that happened and that I request a special call meeting of City Council the same time as right now, a week from today, if that's agreeable. You know, I think it's worthy of a meeting just dedicated to the entire subject, quite frankly. I think another week hurts nothing. Mr. Wright, do you have any opinion on that before I ask council if there's consensus?
I agree with what you said. Another week doesn't hurt anything. OUC has agreed that, as things stand today, that we could start billing at the new rates on October 15. This may affect that. It may push it to November 1, but the impact of that in the grand scheme of things is not significant. So I think your ideas and the extra week of discussion and clarification is sound.
Mr. Kramer, did you have a comment?
Well, I guess you got a motion on the floor, and I would assume that the motion would kind of dovetail into the idea of having the meeting on Tuesday.
The motion being?
You made the motion?
I made a motion that we take no action on this today. And set it for...
I'll second it, but I would like to amend this, that the schedule I proposed, we go forward with that if that's agreeable. Theor, would you amend your motion?
To have a special call meeting on September 13 at 9:30?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd accept that if you would have all the information. I think, you know, for the meeting that we had yesterday, or that was held yesterday, the Utilities Commission certainly had a lot of questions. I imagine when the Finance Commission meets jointly, there will be more questions.
So do you...
And I have this list of questions, so I thought, you know, I don't know if all those can be addressed by week from today, you know, and even that that might be...
So do we set a special call meeting preceding our next city council, or should we push it for Wednesday or Thursday of that week? I mean, do you think that a 24-hour turnaround from the joint commission is wrong enough?
I do not feel that's adequate.
Okay. So let's pick a day.
Yeah, I think it is worthy of a meeting by itself.
I do, too.
So I don't really care whether it's Wednesday or Thursday or whenever.
Well, I mean, it's based on the availability of five of us. I can be here any day.
And Mr. Wright.
And Mr. Wright, sorry.
Mr. Wright can't be here Wednesday.
Yeah, I cannot be here Wednesday, the 14th, and probably not Thursday, the 15th.
No, and their ability to respond to the extent of the issues that are raised at those meetings, you know, I mean, if we have a meeting and we still have a lot of further questions, it's not going to be here. I think you may have to wait until after that joint meeting to find out what the issues are and how much research needs to be done before you can set a special call.
Are you available on the 19th of October?
Yes, I am.
Can we set it?
I just pulled up my calendar.
Why not do that?
That's a Monday?
Yeah.
It's the day before our next city council meeting. It's the week after the joint meeting.
All right, well, unless there's objection, I'll call a special call meeting for the 19th at 9:30.
Okay.
With Mrs. Vauck, you will have then the joint utilities and finance meeting will be then on the 12th. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Wright, before you continue, I would really, as we look at this...
Mayor, you need to vote on the motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I'm making a motion that we hold no action today and have a special call meeting on October 19.
Correct.
At 9:30 a.m. to discuss this contract and vote on it.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed because of the additions of setting up a meeting when we don't know what we will have response to all the issues and assuming that we'll have all the information at that time to take a vote.
We can change. We can still change it.
I know.
It can be a work in progress.
So it passes four to one. Mr. Wright, I would like to see you do something today that didn't happen yesterday. I'd like to run through your presentation and see it from beginning to end, and council can ask questions as we go through it, but after that, we'll open it up to general public comment. But you've got an extensive presentation here, and there were pages of us that were missed yesterday, for what it's worth. Is that possible to do that, if that way?
Yes, sir. It would be really great if the nice man who does the AV stuff could come in here and get the PDF up on the screen with the clicker. You have, you all have, I think you all have complete copies of the color presentation.
The public needs it.
Thank you. Thank you. Is this the PDF?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens. As always, it's great to be here. Thank you. I'll just go through this. It's not going to take that long, and I'm happy to answer any questions. At the mayor's request, I'll run through it, and we can have all the questions you want thereafter and offline after the meeting. Overall, this has been a long process. We have a new PPA with OUC in hand. The red line version was distributed two weeks ago, yesterday, to everybody, so it's been out there. And there were a lot of good questions asked yesterday by utilities commissioners and finance commissioners who were present and citizens as well, and we'll be addressing a few of those pursuant to the Utilities Commission's action. The overall recommend, the overall, the bogey here is the existing PPA. We are in the state of affairs that we are in. The FUMPA contracts, I do not see any way that they are going away. They're validated by the Courts of Florida. Sorry. And I don't see any way that those are going away. Those costs are fixed. We have what is presently a PPA with OUC that has 14-plus years remaining on it, and we have an opportunity to reduce that term to eight years, along with significantly reduced pricing in the eight years that we would be buying power. Accordingly, our recommendation, staff's recommendation, is to accept the new PPA. It does have levelized or levelizing or stabilizing demand charges that fluctuate. They start high and they dip, and then they go back up. The reason they do that is to take advantage or complement cost reductions that we are fully expect to occur in the city's overall electric costs over time, particularly the roll-off of the Stanton 1 debt in 2019 and the roll-off of the city's own electric system debt in fiscal '23. Bottom line, this provides substantial cost savings versus the existing PPA. It provides savings of $120 million, $119.7 million net present value versus the existing PPA. A little bit less than half of that net present value amount is realized in the first eight years as through the lower pricing from OUC, 51.8. Somewhat more than half, 67.9 million, is realized in the last six years by virtue of being able to get into the market and get, frankly, to get out of the PPA with OUC that's going to have $15,000 a KW a month, $14,950 a KW a month demand charges. They also will provide rate reductions versus the existing PPA. It will provide a modest rate reduction versus the current today rates, it'll be $2.50 effective December 1. It would be $4.35 if you were only comparing this PPA to the existing PPA, but because we had surplus collections in the past year, we were already able to knock $1.85 off the rate on September 1. But comparing PPA to PPA, it's $4.35, and it provides a more stable rate trajectory over the period 2016 to 2023. You've heard me say this a lot of times. If everything holds still, the two biggest things being the gas prices and our sales forecast, if everything holds still as projected based on the best information we have today, you should wind up with a retail rate per thousand residential kilowatt-hours that's half a percent higher in 2023 than it will be in December. That's pretty stable. Now, is that a guarantee? Not at all. Things change, and it almost certainly won't work out that way. If sales are higher and gas prices are lower, they could be less. If other things happen, they could be greater, but it does provide for a relatively stable rate trajectory. I will add, I don't have a dog in the fight on whether you go with the levelized, levelizing demand charges, which provide for the more stable rate trajectory, or whether you go with the OUC's original proposed demand charges. Talking to a lot of people, the city manager and others, I got the impression that a more stable rate trajectory was a desired objective of the city, and that's why we did this. OUC is indifferent. They'd be happy to go back to the rates that started '83, '81, and go up to 11038, but that's a decision you all can make. Major provisions of the PPA, the new PPA as compared to the old PPA, shorter term, eight years instead of 14, lower demand costs or capacity charges for the base product. We buy peaking capacity and energy from OUC, which enables us to shut down Big Blue. There is a minimum demand or a floor in the amount of megawatts we buy from OUC under the new PPA. That was probably the biggest value consideration to OUC in agreeing to give us the reduced pricing in the shorter term. I think they also probably get a benefit from the shorter term because they wouldn't have to add capacity to serve wholesale load in the mid-'20s that they would have to, might have to do if they were continuing to serve us. But we're allowed to reduce our billing, our peak demand for billing demand calculation purposes under the PPA by 10 megawatts, which is a real benefit to us. We have, we're on the hook. There's a corresponding penalty or ding provision, capacity deficiency charges, if we don't meet it, if we go over. But so we have work to do in terms of implementing new rates, probably interruptible standby generation credits and things like that, and OUC would retain the gas transportation contracts on a permanent basis. There are some other provisions, most significant of which is a bilateral force majeure provision, whereas in the existing PPA, for whatever reason unbeknownst to this attorney standing here today, was one way in favor of OUC in the 2008 PPA. I wasn't here? I don't know. There is a rather extensive change in law provision that addresses what would happen in the event that we were to have a seriously adverse legal outcome, either at the legislature or through the courts, and lose our ability to serve a lot of our load. One thing is that we can start the lower base purchases in October, or it may turn out to be November 15, 2015, even if the full transmission for the peaking purchases were not to be available. That was a hang-up all along. We thought we might have to wait till sometime next year to be able to implement this, and we were able to negotiate in the last round of negotiations the ability to start early with OUC. They will continue to provide compliance services. As I mentioned, there is this capacity deficiency provision. If we, you know, we're going to buy 191 megawatts of capacity next year, total. FUMPA, OUC peaking, OUC base. If we go over 191, we have to pay extra, and we'll, I think, OUC asked for is fair. It's either the increment at their higher demand charges under the old PPA or the actual cost if they have to buy power in the market to service. It's hard to argue that that's unfair. And then there's a whole lot of red in here that's really just clarifying and conforming editorial changes. As I mentioned earlier, you know, why accept the new PPA? The macro considerations are big savings, $120 million net present value. The micro considerations are substantial cost reductions, rate reductions, and a smoother rate trajectory. Here's the summary table that shows the base case, which is the existing PPA, Alt Case 1, which is the go-to-market scenario, and Alt Case 2 with the levelized demand charges, which is the one we are recommending to you. You'll see that it's $119.7 million savings versus the base case for the new OUC PPA. It's $135.9 million, or about a $16.3 million difference with go-to-market. These numbers are less, by about $7 million, than the numbers you previously saw in the corresponding table. The reason for that is that Mr. Stradley identified an oversight in, well, he identified an oversight in the comparison case, and when we went back to fix it, we received last week, literally, just the way things happened with the budget process, we received the final numbers for the Big Blue costs for 2016 through 2023. We had, per previous conversations, reasonably assumed that they would be significantly less. They're significantly higher. That's what caused the deltas to decline from $142 million to $136 million and from $126 million to $119 million, but the orders of magnitude are still the same. The next table shows the distribution between time periods, the savings in the first eight years, i.e. the eight years of the PPA term, are about 51.8 million. The savings in the latter six years after we're out of the contract are 67.9 million, which highlights the point that I think everybody has realized all along, and that is that getting out of the existing PPA earlier is a significant economic benefit to the city of Vero Beach. Next table shows some recent historical rate information and what they have been and what we project they would be under the existing PPA, as well as what they would be under the new OUC PPA. To clarify the assumption here, I have good numbers as to what we project the costs will be in the next few years, actually through 2023, which are actually shown in detail on the next slide. But I assumed, we assumed, and I did consult with our rate consultants on this, a constant differential between the average cost per retail megawatt-hour overall system and the residential 1,000 KWH bill of $2.34, because that's the differential today. Today, our all-in revenue requirement is $124.42. That's net of the $1.85. It'd be $126.27 without the buck 85, but it's $124.42. The rate is $122.08. That's a $2.34 differential. We assume that that would remain constant in projecting these rates. Council could, as a matter of policy, based on a future new cost-to-service study, make a different policy decision, but these are good comparable numbers. And you'll see, we get a rate decrease of $2.50 December 1. It's about, if you just put PPA against PPA, it'd be a $4.35 decrease because a buck 85 of that is already in place due to the surplus correction that's in place. It's a $2.50 rate reduction in December, but in looking ahead to the next four years, the differences are between 1080 and 1270 versus the existing PPA. Now, let's see, we'll go, yay. This is actually the cost, but the rates will track this very, very closely. The blue line is, the gray line at the top is the projected all-in retail cost per megawatt hour under the existing PPA. The blue line is the all-in retail cost per megawatt hour or per 1,000 kilowatt-hours under the originally proposed demand charges that OUC offered us in July that started at '83, '81 and go to 11038 over the eight years. The orange line is the trajectory with the levelizing or stabilizing demand charges that we recommended. And again, I will say, I'm indifferent. If you all want to go with the other ones, it's fine with me. But you'll see, it provides a flatter trajectory. The next three slides are something you've already seen. It's the summary of OUC's bullet points, discussion points, based on the agreement we reached at our meeting with them on July 30. The next two pages are, just show you the demand charges under the new PPA, starting $10,978, and then, like I said, they fluctuate. They go down, they go up. They come back up in 2020 because in 2020, the Stanton 1 debt rolls off, so we're complementing there, and they jump back up pretty good. And they jump back up pretty good in 2023, and the reason for that is the city debt rolls off in 2023. So we complement that to keep the rates as stable as we can. And that gets us back to the bottom line. We would recommend that you accept the new OUC PPA. Certainly subject to your policy decision whether you want the more stable rate trajectory or the slightly more up tilted rate trajectory, because it provides, either way, it provides significant cost savings, provides significant rate reductions, and a more stable rate trajectory. I do want to add, there's one other thing about the levelized demand charge trajectory. It's not a gigantic point, but at its meeting on August, no. At its recent meeting, not yesterday, but before, the Utilities Commission voted to express their wish that the demand charge path, excuse me, their demand charge path be selected so as to produce the lowest net present value of costs. The levelizing trajectory does have the benefit of providing a slightly, slightly lower net present value cost. It's $397,000 less. You know, it's not, you know, it's $400,000 against $120 million. It's not a huge difference, but it is less. Okay. Thank you.
A question of you, though. I think several of us were here yesterday for the meeting. If I remember, I think there were four major points, about four. Do you have those categorized and so on? Are they worth bringing up at this time?
The components of the Utilities Commission motion?
Yes.
Yes, I just got a copy of this, but from my notes, I have that there's a request that we clarify the demand components as a, in particular, I think, with respect to the shores, as they relate to the 85-megawatt floor in the PPA, that we clarify the application of the language, which is, you know, it's, I'll be honest with you, it's lawyer's. Extensively negotiated by myself and counterparts at OUC, the provision that relates to the pricing of the capacity efficiency energy. There's a good question that Mr. Alwerty raised yesterday as to whether the, whether, if the highest marginal cost, even if that only applies to part of the amount that OUC would purchase to sell to us, applies to everything they sell to us, or whether there's a different provision and a different subsection of 3.2B, of Appendix B, of Exhibit C. There's a separate provision that says they can charge actual cost. I think that's what controls, but I definitely agree with Mr. Alwerty. It's worth clarifying, and we will do so. There was a request from the Utilities Commission that we ask OUC to remove Section 12, which relates to the site lease. And I will tell you that this was a negotiation and that this was discussed, but you're my client, and I will go back and ask them about that again. And finally, there is a question about the allocation of any stranded cost recovery pursuant to the change in law provision. In short, if there's a drastic change in law, which is broadly defined in the PPA, and our ability to perform is grossly impaired, we are allowed to, we're required to use best efforts to defend against, to fend off the change in law, including taking any meritorious appeal to the highest level possible, and that does include the United States Supreme Court. If you can, if one could find, if you got to that point, and, you know, there's a lot of ifs here, but if you got to that point, and there were a meritorious constitutional claim under the United States Constitution, that would warrant filing a petition for writ certiorari to the United States Supreme Court, we would be obligated to do that. I would presume that OUC would be helping us on this, because they would stand to be a beneficiary, but we're obligated to seek, first, we're obligated to seek, to fend off, we're obligated to seek, as our own fiduciary responsibilities, we're obligated to seek stranded cost recovery. And the question then is, if we were to recover some stranded cost award in judicial, in subsequent court proceedings, how would that be allocated? It kind of depends on what it is, I think, but there's a fair question raised as to how that recovery would be allocated. One way of looking at it is this. If the court says, you're entitled to stranded cost recovery for the amounts that you would otherwise have to pay to OUC, that you can't now, but you're, we're going to give you this money as damages, that's really damages that OUC would be entitled to, probably all of that should go to OUC. If it's split between other components, then it would be split differently, but that's worth clarifying, and we'll figure it out. There was another question about transmission, but that was dropped, and...
Well, I think it's worth, well, maybe have Mr. Connor comment on the transmission, because that has been an issue.
Yes, we just recently received a report from FPNL that really indicates there's little or no exposure to the city as far as costs go, and it's more of a protocol issue for the transmission to be able to get the 54 megawatts to us. The next step is for OUC to review that report. We anticipate no problem there. And then it goes to the Florida Reliability Coordinating Council. FPNL plays a major role in that, and they did the report, so we don't anticipate any real issues. I also gave you a copy of an email this morning that we received that gives some preliminary timeframes for when this thing would be heard. Now, this is not coming from any major official, but it's from those who have been in the process before, and it appears that we would either be on the Florida Reliability Coordinating Committee either November 3rd or December 1st, and that will be really the final hurdle for the transmission issues to address that. And then we would be in a position then to turn our units off.
So Unit 2 and 5 have to be, remain operational till when?
Probably till November, or December 1st.
All right. With that, I think we should open the questions. Ms. Turner, go ahead.
Yes, in reviewing this, I guess I'll start looking at a more simplistic method of, you know, a column, what is OUC gaining from this contract, and what is Vero Beach gaining with this contract? And I guess I was concerned, not only are we guaranteeing them this minimum of 85 megawatts a month, but now we are committing to buying peaking power charge. So not only are we guaranteeing that we're buying that 85 megawatts, we're buying an additional 54 megawatts. And I guess, I still haven't been able to find anything about the pricing on this 54 megawatts as far as peaking. How that compares with the market pricing for that type of power?
I just had, well, okay, the pricing is in the PPA.
Agreed, but I have nothing to compare that with.
Pardon?
Yeah, but how do I compare that to the market? If we were, if we were not committing and I was buying our peaking power from another source, what would it be?
Well, you've got two things going on. One is if you, one is you can't get the lower pricing on the base capacity, and you can't get the shorter contract without buying the peaking capacity from OUC. That's a tie-in sale. So the other, the other relevant comparison is the go-to-market scenario, in which you would buy both base and peaking in the market.
And yeah, I think that we need to look at, because obviously, even if it's something we choose not to go to market, I think those are huge financial considerations that we need to be comparing for the public, because this, you know, it's an option, maybe not the best option, but it's still an option, you know, and would have some significant savings.
That has been covered. It was covered in the previous analyses that we presented in August. It's covered in this slide here, because it's all rolled into the go-to-market pricing in Alt Case 1 in the slide that I just flipped to on the screen. That includes buying all of our other capacity, shutting down Big Blue and buying all of our other capacity in the market.
Granted, I still get my point. I still would like to see what kind of premium we're paying for this peaking power, because I'm trying to do a balance as to what OUC is getting, you know? They're offering us an 8% reduction on the rates, you know? What are, what are we giving up as a utility for this 8%? I mean, they've got 85-megawatt commitment, we're giving them additional 54 megawatts that we're paying at a premium price for, in my opinion. We're committing to legally defend them if there's any change in law. We are giving them a share of stranded costs in the event that we lose our suit with Indian River Shores. We're giving them the ability to repower or lease the power plant. We're giving them a gas contract that's $10 million or more, should have a better, a greater value to them with their business. And they're also getting a shorter term so that they don't need to add capacity, you know? I look at what, you know, I balance that against Vero Beach, you know, and I don't think we're getting that much out of it. You look at the changes that were made in the contract, all these changes were made to OUC's benefit. I mean, I think the only one we were able to get was that you were able to get a more balanced force majeure clause. But I'm saying, who's looking out for Vero Beach? Where's our protection for rates, for rate increase in here?
Well, I'll just reiterate, the big values to Vero Beach are lower pricing for the next eight years, and getting out of the PPA after those eight years and getting into the market, which provides more than half of the total savings that are available to us if we take this deal. It's your call.
You know, Chef, let me ask you this question. I mean, this is what has been negotiated with OUC, and you're going to look into the four points, I believe it was four points. And the go-to-market's on the bottom of the slide, is that not correct, 16 million?
The difference between go-to-market and the new PPA is projected to be $16.278 million. Yes, sir.
But is that go-to-market for the same time period? I mean, you're extending go-to-market to 2029. I'd like to see that go-to-market at 2023 versus this PPA. Do you have that analysis? Because that's what we're really comparing. Because if not, you're taking savings about being out to market later on and pulling them forward.
Councilmember, I will double check, but I believe that the difference is, will still be exactly $16.278 million, because in the go-to-market scenario, Alt Case 1, we're in the market from 2024 to 29, and in the OUC new PPA with a shorter contract, we're in the market from 2024 to 2029. So those costs are, should be identical under both those scenarios. So the $16.3 million should be exactly the same number if you looked at it from 16 to 23. I will double check that with Mr. Harrington, but I believe that's right.
Yeah, because if you're forecasting from 23 to 29, your uncertainty in your forecast is certainly to be much greater. You're still looking at the impact of the Clean Air Act on the coal industry, and a lot of other factors that would skew those forecasts in the later years. I'd still like to see a full comparison, like I said, for this time period with a go-to-market option.
Like I said, I think you got it, but I will make sure, and I'll make sure.
Any other specific question, though? I mean, you rattled off a number of things, and he's working on one. If there are other specific ones, bring them forward, please.
I certainly think we need to apply a cost to all the, to all these concessions that we are agreeing to with these terminology. I mean, legal defense, potential sharing of stranded costs, allowing OUC to repower the power plant or release it, or lease it, an updated value of the gas contract to OUC, and the impact of the shorter term that relieves OUC from having to repower. Because I guarantee you, OUC's board, when they're reviewing this contract, they're going to, they're putting dollar amounts in everything they got from Vero Beach.
I have a question. Would Article 12 require a public referendum if that was something that OUC wanted to pursue?
I am thus advised by your city attorney that the answer to that question is yes. I'm further advised by your city attorney that you can't waive the charter requirements for the referendum by contract. So I, my intel from, my legal advice from your city attorney is that, is that this site lease option is still subject to the requirements of referendum.
Let me ask you a question. Why, why in your negotiations with OUC wasn't the plant dropped out? I heard you give an answer yesterday, but I think it's worth giving today.
This was a negotiation in both sides. The city and OUC went into, went into this with the premise that we wanted to make as few changes as possible. And this was one that was discussed, but it was a change that OUC asked not be made because they didn't want more changes in the PPA.
And yet, they wanted less changes. And let's look at, if you look at under the wholesale electric service, look at the language that OUC wanted to add.
Can you give me a section, councilmember?
Certainly. Article 3, wholesale electric service. And in the end of that paragraph, they added, "The parties understand and agree that from the perspective of each party, obligations hereunder are a power supply resource obligation entered into to serve all of Vero Beach's customers, and as such, have equal statute and an investment in the generating plan." Why was this added? When they're looking at trying to add the least amount of changes or things? There are several other examples to that.
That was added principally to protect the city in the event we wind up in a lawsuit over stranded costs. It's not dispositive, but it's evidence that the parties to this contract believe that this PPA has the same status as a power plant for purposes of trying to demonstrate stranded cost liability.
So once again, we're opening up the door further to the city of Vero Beach for stranded cost liability. There was also...
That door is open in the event of some other action by some other legal actor, not us, and not OUC.
Clearly a response to our litigation that we are stand facing at the moment. So, sir.
You know, Ms. Turner, it's good to bring all these out now, but if you have more of them before Mr. Wright leaves, I think it'd be well worthwhile covering all of them. I mean, that's, that's our job, to look at the detail. I mean, if I was sitting in your position, it might be tough to go through every yellow tape you got on there.
No, I'm just trying to get, stick to those that have anything to do with language. And I mean, this Article 1511.2, I mean, we're trying to change the least amount possible. And I mean, this is unbelievable. I mean, OUC, to me, appears to be pushing any coal, any of the Coal Clean Air Acts onto Vero. We're committing to do, to defend OUC against any legal, you know, legislative action. This is the stranded cost. This is, it's all protection for OUC, and I think just...
This section is protection for the city of Vero Beach in the event that we become unable to perform because of other governmental action. Back in the fall, I came to you, and the question was raised, what happens if we lose the great big lawsuit? If we lose the DEC statement actions at the PSC or the Florida Supreme Court, and we can no longer serve all of our customers? Are the offers, the, let's say, the November 25th offer that OUC made to us with lower pricing and a shorter term, what impact would, would an adverse legal action like that have on our ability to continue to buy from OUC? Would we still be on the hook for everything? I said to you at that time, I have a handshake agreement with the OUC General Counsel that we would work out terms that would address that in a mutually agreeable way. These are those terms. This only applies in the case that we, the city of Vero Beach, are on the adverse end of some government action, whether it's a lawsuit or legislative action. It's not clean power plan. And basically, to run through it, it says, if we lose our ability to serve the customers we have expected to serve and incurred liabilities and obligations and made, spent money to serve, first, we have to defend, we have to try to fend it off, naturally enough, and then we have to seek stranded cost recovery, naturally enough. And then, but we can reduce, we can start whacking the amount we buy off the peaking capacity. If we get off the peaking capacity, it goes down into the base capacity. If that causes the base capacity to purchase to go below 85 megawatts, the demand charges for the remaining term through 2023, not 2029, the demand charges through the remaining term go back to the old demand charges, which, in my opinion, is a completely reasonable ask for OUC to make. Look, we thought we were getting this bargain. Now, because of this government action, we're getting a whole lot different bargain. We want to at least get back to the demand charges. And if it gets so low that it becomes so inconvenient, you know, that 18-megawatt contract that they don't want to mess with it, they can walk. It's not a default. And my understanding of where we've been all along is, if they decide to walk in that extended force majeure, governmental force majeure scenario, we'd be happy enough to be in the market anyway.
Mr. Wright, I mean, when you, I'll go to a fundamental on this. I believe there are only three choices that we can make, and you correct me if I'm wrong. We can stay where we are, correct? We can go after the 16 million on the bottom of the slide you have up there and go back out to market.
Yes, sir.
Or we can accept this with whatever modifications you can get between now and the future. Are those the right choices? Are there other choices we have that I don't know about?
I would just argue that that 16 million is understated because I think you'd have to put down the additional costs that we are incurring by making these commitments to OUC.
We can discuss this now or offline. I just, I don't fully understand which, what costs we're incurring by making these additional commitments. Like, you mean the floor? The 85-megawatt floor?
Well, 85-megawatt floor, the commitment to buy our peaking power from them as opposed to on the market, the legal defense costs, the gas contract. But I think that those are other costs that we are incurring and, and a handcuff of eight years, you know? So I think those are other costs that we're incurring.
We're handcuffed for 20 years, I believe, well, 14.
Under the existing contract, yes.
But are my three choices correct? And so, repeat them.
Stay with what you got, go to market, take the new PPA.
Why not go to market?
In our view, it's close enough with the litigation risk and everything else that goes along with that. Litigation cost, risk.
Time.
Frankly, what would be a train wreck, train wreck, delay of getting the new available, the reductions that are available this month potentially, delaying that by months, if not years, as we went through litigation, you know, our consensus view on the staff's side is that it's not worth it.
For what it's worth.
But it's your decision, counsel.
For what it's worth, and, you know, there's a negative in what I'm going to say. But if we were to accept this, there would be seven, 17 municipal utilities that are either roughly the same as us or significantly higher than us. There'd be 15 municipal utilities lower. And this is taking the July run, July 2015.
Yes, sir.
As far as investor-owned utilities, there would be one, one significantly the same as us, actually. I'm looking at 1,000 kilowatts.
I know what you're looking at.
There'd be one significantly the same as us. Gulf Power, which is Southern Company, which is, if not the biggest utility in the country, the next to the biggest, is significantly above us. So is Florida Utilities Northeast, Florida Utilities Northwest. The negative on that is Tampa Electric, just been acquired, is lower than us. And of course, the tragedy is Florida Power and Light is, continues significantly lower than us.
It's lucky for them.
But I guess my point in saying that is that, you know, what we've been, I think we've been trying to do is close with Florida Power and Light if we can, and if we can't, bring the rates down. And this brings us to the middle of the pack, for what that's worth. Is that a true statement or a wrong statement?
That's a true statement. It gets us to, it gets us, we're already below Gulf and Florida Public Utilities. We're a hair above Duke, will remain a hair above Duke for today. I, I think they're going to be seeing some changes in January, regardless, whether slight decreases or increases, we're going to be right on top of Duke, Duke, Florida's rates. Duke is the largest utility in the country, by the way, by retail customers, Southern second. We'll be right on top of Duke and will be a hair above the mean of the munis. And as you correctly point out, you know, we'll be, we'll be right slam around the median of the, of the munis. You know, and I would articulate our goal slightly differently. Our goal is to get our rates as low as we possibly can and continue to provide reliable service. That's our goal.
Further questions of counsel before I open a public comment?
I sat in yesterday, and I, and I think this, this process we have of the commissions advising and the commissions doing their homework on this really worked yesterday. I, I thought that four hours or so that they spent was well-done. And it's, it's too bad that not everybody could be here, and I'm sure we're going to do this again, and it'll go on for another four hours. But it was, it was really productive, and people had spent a lot of time looking at this. And I think the process works, which I think is, is really commendable in some ways. It was good, very good.
Right, Mr. Wright, stand by.
Yes, sir.
Probably most of the questions will be one you have to answer, not, not any of us. Mr. Musch, come forward, please, sir.
Mark Nutcher, 617 Indian Lilac Road. Maybe repeating myself a little bit from yesterday, but I also have a question I didn't ask yesterday. The first item has to do with Paragraph 12, which is in the existing contract, so it's been there since 2008, which allows OUC to either repower our plant or tear it down and build their own. I'm not sure who the tear-down costs would be, but we, Mr. O'Connor reaffirmed yesterday that we're going to close that plant regardless. And whether we tear it down or not, Mayor Winger has a plan, or is looking for a plan to utilize the back half of the property or so for park purposes, municipal purposes. And yet, we are leaving permission for OUC to come back after we've done all that and make it into a go-and-blowing power plant again. And as far as I'm concerned, that's just not acceptable.
Mark, before you go, go on to the second point, if you have several.
I'm not done with that point.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
But if, if there is value to OUC, or if they have plans, then they should tell us what that is. And if we have to pay more to get out of that part of the contract, which of course cuts into our minimal $2.50 a month savings, we should know that at this time. The fact that, you know, we're going through this major contract revision and it'll probably be the last one in the next eight years, the fact that it's not convenient, or we don't want to make a lot of changes, is, is just not acceptable. That, that's the end of those comments.
Yeah, well, and stay up there with your next comment, Mr. Wright or Mr. O'Connor, do you have any comment?
No. Mine, as I described earlier, the transmission study is pretty clear and I think pretty beneficial to us. Because one of the goals, I think the council has expressed over time, is for us to get out of the generating business to begin with.
I don't really have anything to add, except that I have committed that I will ask OUC about this. I can also add it, just as a statement of fact, that OUC has never indicated, I mean, not given a scintilla of indication of interest of, in actually building a power plant there. And further, you know, I know a lot about the Florida system. I can't really see them wanting to build a power plant in Vero Beach to serve load elsewhere. This was in the existing PPA. The way I understand it, the way I read it, is that, that they thought that at some point they might, with, with a 20-year PPA, they thought they might want to put new generation to replace our old inefficient units at Big Blue here to serve our load. That, with a contract being shortened eight years, I would personally characterize as being off the table, and I can't see them wanting to build a power plant here.
You're going to bring back some answers.
I'm going to bring back an answer.
And Mark, take them sequentially, one, one, one at a time. I mean, they're all good questions.
Sure. I would, my response to that would be that I would suggest you do not sign a contract that has that in it, particularly if it's, if it's not going to be applicable. If it, if Mr. Wright is correct, then that, that paragraph has no value to them. If it does have value to them, let's ask them what the value is and pay it to them if we have to.
Next point, go ahead.
All right. So that was my first point. The, the second question is, and I didn't, I haven't searched the contract for this, but aren't we paying OUC a significant management fee to manage our plant? And don't, wouldn't that go away once the plant is offline? And where does that enter into these numbers? That's savings, if there is any. Or are we going to continue paying them a management fee?
Mr. Wright or Mr. O'Connor, do you have any answer to that? I do not.
I think I know the answer, but I want to look at the PPA. That's not an item that's been high on my radar, on my radar screen at all lately, but I will, I will get to that in just a second.
You can come back.
No, let me, we're here, let's, let's do it now. I can do it quickly. Give me a second.
You know, I mean, this has been sagas since 1971 and will continue because our rates still need to go down further. And so, let's take the time. We got the time, Mark.
Eric, can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry, they're, they're too close to the related sections, and I was looking to one.
While you're looking, Chef, unless you have it.
Wayne, it was brought up that OUC wanted to use that power plant, but they would have to lease that power plant. Does the city council have the authority to just arbitrarily lease to OUC?
No, because you have that restriction in the charter that it's very, very limited what it could be leased for, you know, civic, recreational, public purposes.
So if OUC wanted to use the power plant with a lease, it would have to go to a referendum?
Just like FPL, we had to have the referendum about leasing the property.
Okay, so the, so really, the city council can't arbitrarily let them use the power plant for another power generation?
Not under the charter.
Okay.
Right, so whatever that cost is, that will go away. But as far as any NERC, that would remain.
We, we don't pay for it, I don't think. We don't pay separately for it.
No, that, that's all bundled in the same price.
Okay. Looking at Appendix B, Article 4, OUC does provide plant operation management services. They do provide NERC compliance services. The NERC compliance service is under a separate contract. Ted, do we, do we pay separately for the compliance services or not?
We do.
Okay, we, we do pay separately for the compliance services to OUC. Sorry. Is that the $382,000? Or is that a smaller amount than the $380?
$2.73.
Okay. And that will go away?
With the claim correct?
Yeah, okay. We do pay separately for handling our NERC compliance services. We don't pay separately for plant operation management services. The NERC compliance costs will go away. The deletion or the elimination of those costs is reflected in, in the analyses that you have.
It's what, $400,000 a year or something?
Plus or minus, I think. It's $382.5 in the current fiscal year, but yes, yes, sir. They do, they do our transmission, they do our, some, some transmission planning for us, and they do some load forecasting for us. Those, I think, are rolled into the overall, overall payment that we make for, for services. And they would continue to do those, transmission and load forecasting. They, obviously, if the plant goes, if the plant, when the plant's fully retired, they won't have any responsibility there. Ted may need to come back up here and tell you what, if anything, they do in, in terms of plant management services. I don't think it's significant, but he can say.
They still will be doing all the transmission planning for TND.
Go ahead, Mark, your next one.
Well, I just wanted to finish up on that one or follow up because basically, then, I wasn't wrong. We don't write them a check for the management services, but those management services are included in the, the higher rates we pay. And so, some of the reductions we're getting in the rates we pay would be included. How do I say this? The fact that we're not getting those services anymore would, would naturally reduce those rates a little bit. So maybe, maybe what I'm saying is, it's not just negotiating skills here or a trade-off for, I'll go back to our, our gas contract, which has, which used to have a value of $10 million. So another thing I wanted to ask, the Finance Commission, I guess I mentioned this yesterday, but we're giving away a $10 million asset or an asset of some value, maybe more, maybe less, a significant asset, which doesn't have any cash flow associated with it, but it seems to me that that would, that the giving away of that asset would dilute whatever cash flow savings we would have for the first couple of years. And I don't know how that's handled from an accounting standpoint, but you all should just remember that if the $10 million we're giving away doesn't show up in the rates, it is, it is a loss to the system. So in, in terms of Mrs. Turner's comparison of columns, you know, who, who gets what, who benefits from what, and at what cost, it has to fit in there somewhere, I would imagine. And then, the other thing is that, I guess I didn't realize it before, but everybody should understand that more than half of the savings that have been promoted here are due to the shortening of the contract. And, and after the contract is gone, it just becomes pure speculation because what we're doing is guessing on rates eight years out. And the other thing is, these rates and savings are only as a result of OUC. There are other, there are other factors, whether they be FMPA, the three entitlement contracts, or the ARP, the All Requirements Project costs that might be in there that are, that are unknown and unrelated to what you're looking at in terms of rates up on the screen. So, you know, the whole thing's a big moving target. I just wanted to remind you all of that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just fairly briefly on the, on the gas contracts. The gas contracts have some value to OUC, some positive value to OUC, because by taking permanent assignment, release of the gas contracts, they will be able to buy at the lower FTS1, FTS2 rates from FGT, gas transportation capacity. They will thereby be able to avoid paying higher costs for new capacity. Yesterday, Mr. Harrington told you that, that the new capacity rates are about a buck 20, the average rate between FTS1 and FTS2. I think they've got a, I think we've got a final consolidated rate now of 66 or 70 cents. Bill, Bill was using 70 cents yesterday. So there is a positive value to OUC there. The cost to the city of Vero Beach is very, very close to zero because we can't sell the capacity for more than the tariff rate. If the rate's 70 cents, we can release it for 70 cents. We have to pay FGT 70 cents unless counterparty B pays FGT the 70 cents. We can't release it for 75 cents, keep a nickel, and have them pay the 70 cents. There's no positive value to OUC there. I'm sorry, no positive value to the city of Vero Beach there. I, I would say two things. One, I would say, I think, I really think that, that the value to OUC is rolled in to the total pot of value exchange in the, in the contract. And I, you know, I think the idea of having a who gets what and who gives up what is great, and I've got a very rough handwritten outline of what it's going to look like, and I'm on it. But I, I don't think the, the gas contracts is, the only, the only scenario in which, I've said this before, the only scenario in which the gas contracts have value to the city of Vero Beach is if we build a power plant later on down the road, and we have given up the FGT contracts, and we have to go to the market and pay a higher cost for the gas capacity to get the gas transportation to, to fuel the new power plant. That's the only scenario in which it has value to us.
But it's a great negotiating tool as well. If we would go to another power, you know, another power supplier and say, hey, yeah, we want to buy our power from you, we have this asset, you know? Let's work together, see if we can negotiate a better deal and other things. So, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it has value.
Sure, it definitely, yeah. Yes, it does. Thank you.
When we put out the RFP, though, Mrs. Turner, we got, and it didn't go to... When we put out the RFP though, Mrs. Turner, we got, and it didn't go to its final day, but we got zero responses.
Well, that could partly be due to the fact that Orlando sent out letters claiming torturous interference for anybody who responded, Mr. Winger.
Be that as it may, we were looking at no other comers at the time, and for whatever reason. Your, your point certainly may be valid. Mr. Wilson, and with your various points, if you want to do them like Mr. Moocher did one at a time so they can, I got lost yesterday with people getting up and they would have, you know, six or seven.
I would, I would far exceed my three minutes if I did it that way.
Oh, that's okay. Today, that's okay. Take the time you need, Mr. Wilson.
Charlie Wilson, my mailing address is PO Box 651114, Vero Beach, Florida. The, the medical term for this is, when you, when you're trying to heal a sickness is first do no harm. And the question that we have to ask ourselves is, are we first doing harm in order to achieve a partial achievement? Some might say that this actual exercise is more about political power than the cost of power, but the, we keep forgetting in all this conversation about savings and options that we killed the best option, which was the sale to FPNL of Vero Electric. And that was done by this sitting council. So when we're talking about our poor options, remember, it is you who fostered these poor options upon us. And now we are choosing the least of the, of the poor options that we have. Now, this particular contract, I agree with you, Mr. Old, that, I know that may scare you, but I agree with you, Mr. Old, that yesterday's, yesterday's Utilities Commission meeting was quite enlightening. I'm glad that they did the things and looked at the research they did and stopped this speeding train from trying to beat the election date at the cost of what may be millions of dollars. What this contract revealed yesterday was that it limits the public's options, further limits the public options from the meager options we have right now. It also, for those of us who think about the lagoon and conservation, it eliminates any advantage to conserving energy. All, because we're on take or pay, if we conserved enough energy to go below, we're going to pay anyway. The other real problem you have, and I see Mr. Kramer saying BS.
No, it is BS. It's precisely BS because it allows us to manage our load. It actually allows us to implement environmental savings. The other OUC did not allow us to do that.
The cost to-
If Mr. Wright did clarify that, I'd be happy to have him do it.
The cost to, you're clarifying just fine. You know, it's glad that I'm not the angry one today. It's your turn.
Well, you've been beaten on us for quite a while.
Well, you deserve it.
Well, explain that. Explain how we, explain how we killed the FPNL. I mean, you got everything you wanted.
The three of you, the three of you voted in, I believe it was March of 2014, to not go along with the offer that had been made by FMPA and OUC.
That wasn't the end of it.
By denying that, by denying that, thirty days later, you gave them the opportunity to unravel and back away from that offer.
That's not true. That is completely not true.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Kramer.
You know, I mean, they, they came back with a twenty million dollar offer. That was not the end of all of the FMPA entitlement exit costs. That was just the beginning. OUC didn't want to step in and take our place. They jumped out. And that's where the whole thing unraveled. We didn't have anything to do with that.
After your vote.
That was FPNL's responsibility between FPNL and OUC, and that's where it fell apart.
Sir, it was after your vote. The fact is, if you're trying to rewrite history, all I have to do is go back and look at the tapes. Ladies and gentlemen, the three of you voted no. It's that simple. It was three to two. You voted no. And I guess there's some people that are very grateful that you were able to prevent the sale of Vero Electric.
That's not true.
The point is, is where we are, what are we doing now? And what we're doing now is if, if, is limiting options. And it also, it's an insurance policy for OUC. The insurance policy for OUC is insuring the OUC from damages in case there's a revolt in Vero Beach. In case the state legislature changes the law, we still pay. In case the voters of Vero Beach toss all of you out because it's done before the election, we still pay.
The revolt has already happened, Charlie. That was three, four years ago. You guys got everything you wanted and it failed.
No, we didn't.
Yes, you did. You signed a contract. The contract was signed and done.
You stopped it, Mr. Kramer. You personally stopped it.
You're saying I'm smarter than the, than the rest of the council. I'm smarter than FPNL? I'm smarter than all the utility advocates?
No, but Barry Moline, Barry Moline-
I'm amazed that you're setting me up on such a pedestal.
Barry Moline, who advises you, probably is. And George Christopher, who advises Mr. Winger, probably is.
I rise to point of order, you know, using names of particular people, but go ahead. Proceed.
Thank you. If the legislature changed the laws, Vero Beach still pays. If the court changes and sides with Indian River Shores, Vero Beach still pays. If we conserve energy, we still pay. The provisions allow OUC to build a, on the riverfront property. You know what the term is? You know what the term is? Life of the, of the plant. Remember that and from the FMPA contract that, do you think that, that when the lawyer stood up in the FMPA contract and said, did they tell us it was a hundred years long? Okay. That's what's in this contract right now. And what, what our learned attorney, who remember was appointed by the FMPA, that our learned attorney says to us, the reason he can't change that is because it's too much trouble to ask OUC to do it. That's what he said.
Mr. Wilson, I don't believe that FMPA had anything to do with Mr. Wright being here. We'll ask him if you'd like.
You don't think so? Don't you remember you were taking George Christopher with you to the negotiations?
I rise to point of order.
Do you remember that?
You know, his name is not appropriate. Be that as it may, why don't you ask Mr. Wright if he has anything? Go ahead.
When I get finished, I'll, I'll let Honeyman News and everybody else come up here and, and perpetuate the myth that is, that is, you're attempting to rewrite history.
That's precisely what we're trying to do, is stop the myths. We want to know what the truth is. You're throwing things out there and then you're not letting us substantiate them.
Mr. Kramer, you're a really nice fellow, but you wouldn't know the truth if it bit you.
Well, let's put it to the test. Let's put, you know, let's, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wilson, that was not appropriate. I rise to point of order. Don't, personal comments are not allowed.
Well, I will continue on and get through with my, if I, if I can continue not to be interrupted by the people trying to protect their political careers.
I got no political career to protect, believe me.
You're running for county commissioner, aren't you?
I make a heck of a lot more money in the private industry than I do here in politics.
Let him finish, Mr. Kramer. Thank you.
It also has a provision in there that allows the OUC to charge us the highest rate in the state, whatever the highest rate in the state for peaking power. It also allows the OUC, with handshake agreements from Mr. Wright, the OUC to have what he calls interpretation rights. The same interpretation rights that FMPA uses to continue to enslave the City of Vero Beach and its residents. It leaves things in, Mr. Wright's comment was, well, we'll have to litigate that later. It has, any short-term, what you're promising are short-term cost savings. What those short-term cost savings can be wiped out by expenses and, and the other provisions that are hidden in this, in this contract. And remember, we've been through contracts like this three or four times. And every single time, the lawyer stands up here and he says exactly the same thing. Oh, they'll never do that, you know? And we can find, we can certainly see that, that they do. It leaves offensive passages that are left behind simply because it's too much trouble to negotiate. If we were going to negotiate another deal, what we need to do is negotiate a deal that represents Vero Beach. My question is, whose side are you on? Whose side are you on? This is an FMPA contract two, and there is a long line of notorious commissions that are councils that you refer to, Mr. Mayor. And you say, I wonder what they were thinking. I wouldn't have done that. Well, ten years from now, the council sitting here is going to be looking at you, saying, what were they thinking? How I would not have done that?
Mr. Wilson, I'll be ninety then, but go ahead.
I, I know, and you'll probably, you'll probably have left town just like the other people that put us into this particular problem. They're all, they've all retired somewhere else. So what we have here, and in, in the translation and what you've seen with this conflict between Mr. Kramer, who's really a very nice young man, and, and I, is that you have conflicting goals. What we have are two conflicting goals. The first are a group of people who want to achieve utility independence. That's goal one. And the second are achieving a permanent subsidy of taxes for the wealthiest beach residents through permanently higher electric rates. Those are the two goals. And what you have is a history of our utility is built upon deceit. We were deceived to get into, to the All Requirements Program. We were deceived to get into the OUC contract. We have been deceived by a political machine that claims it's neutral, but it isn't. You are deceived over and over and over again. And I'm telling you, for the people, I know I won't change your mind because y'all are going to vote for this if you drown puppies in the contract. Y'all are still going to vote for it. But the fact is, is the public needs to know. The public needs to know that elections have consequences, and in ten years, they're going to be wondering about you. Thank you.
All right, further public comment.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Kafanti, and I live at 441 Holly Road. Somebody early in the meeting mentioned the word transparency. Well, I'll give you an example of the transparency that goes on in the City of Vero Beach. You had a meeting, I expressed this yesterday, and I made sure that the city manager, I'm going to name him Clement, or however he pronounces his last name, was here. And I waited to make sure he was here before I made these comments, and I'm glad he's here today to defend himself. You had a meeting during which time a, an outline or a synopsis or something was passed out. I was told it was a synopsis. And I asked for a copy of the contract that the synopsis or the outline was supposed to be all about. And I called the city clerk one week after you had this meeting where this outline or whatever it was, which I still haven't received, was passed out. And the city clerk informed me that she didn't have a copy of the contract. But guess what? The very next day, I called her in the afternoon, I think, and I don't know what time it was, and I don't know if I can check my phone records to verify it or to, but I know it was on a Tuesday, probably in the afternoon. The very next morning, lo and behold, she receives the contract from the city attorney's office. What a coincidence. So I made further investigation. I thought that was strange, and made further investigation. And the city attorney received it from your hired attorney on the Friday before. And that wasn't transferred over to the city clerk's office until yours truly asked for a copy of it. That's so much for your bloody transparency in the City of Vero Beach. On the brighter side, I'd like to compliment three people. Pilar Turner for doing due diligence, taking care of and looking at this thing the way that you other people are faking it and are not doing. That's number one. I compliment Charlie Wilson for getting Kramer to speak more this morning than he's done ever since he's been elected to office. And there was another person I'd like to compliment, but handshake, oh, yeah, it's great, the attorney, the hired attorney. I think he's done a great job for you people. Not for the City of Vero Beach, but you people, the people that hired him. Done a great job, and I compliment that. And I admire him. But I found a flaw in his, what he said before, something about some handshake. As far as I know, that only works with the mob. I don't under, I never heard of any business people making a handshake without a contract, a written contract. So I question, maybe he had a little cerebral softening going on there at, at the time. Let me see if I can read my writing. Basically, ba, 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 about a pumpkin. There's some urgency to pass this, get us involved in this contract. And I'd like to know whose pumpkin is going to, whose carriage, whose money card is going to turn into a pumpkin if this doesn't happen. You know, this is, I don't know what the rest of the public is thinking. Anybody that supports you people are either ignorant, stupid, or part of the conspiracy to defraud the public of, of their money, the general public via their power bills. That's what this is all about. This is, again, I said yet again, and I've never been proven wrong, this is nothing but a money laundering operation, a whole FMPA, OUC, City of Vero Beach operation. It's nothing but a money laundering operation. It just so happens that people need power. And that's how you get away with it. So that's, I question the timing of this, why, why the urgency? By getting, and I agree with Charlie Wilson, you people, the three of you are going to vote, I don't know about Mr. Old here, but the three of you are going to vote for this contract come hell or high water. You're going to do it. So I'm wasting my time, I'm wasting your time, and we're wasting, you're wasting the public's time. Because we know what Kramer's going to do. We know what the other two of you are going to do. And by doing so, you're turning over the sovereignty of the City of Vero Beach to the thieves or the gangsters over no UUC and FMPA. That's essentially what's doing. They have complete control. They're even telling us before we even, in this contract, that we got to go to the Supreme Court of the United States. I assume that that's what Supreme Court they're talking about. We got to go to a Supreme Court. You know how much that's going to cost? You have no idea. To go before the Supreme Court. Why, why isn't that in the contract to say, well, Exhibit A, or asterisk, or footnote, number one, this is going to cost you X millions of dollars to go before the Supreme Court, and it's going to take so many years. In the meantime, you're going to be squabbling with these gangsters over there? You guys got to be kidding the public, you know? Again, they're either stupid, ignorant, or part of the conspiracy, or a combination of the three. It's a disgrace. This is total disgrace. I got better things to do in my time than come here and talk to you people. Again, I appreciate what Ms. Turner has done. And the rest of you, God forgive you.
Just one, one, one thing, if I can. I mean, I, you know, my door is open. If you ever want to talk, I'll talk.
I'm talking right now. If you've got something to say, I'm willing to listen.
I'm willing to listen to the question.
And if you want to hear what, exactly what I feel, it's too bad we can't talk in the parking lot or up on, up on Broadway and Forty Second Street in New York, and I'll tell you exactly, I'll tell you exactly what I think.
I rise to point of order.
I've given the gentleman the opportunity to talk. People don't want to talk. They want to get up there, they give their talking points. You know, if, I've told you before, the doors are open. You want to go through the vault and look at the documentation, go for it.
I just told you what I think. I can't, the SEC prevents me from fully expressing myself because it limits my vocabulary.
I'm giving you the opportunity to go back there and look at anything you want.
I have this sophisticated vocabulary as anybody in this room, but I also have a better vocabulary that I learned on the streets where I grew up, that tells you where you-
Where I can go, I know. Precisely. And quite frankly, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that.
Good.
But the doors are open. If you want to come back, I'll take you through the whole thing. You can see everything. I don't care. There's nothing here that's, that's hidden.
No, but the fact is, you're going to vote for the contract come hell or high water. That's all that counts.
No, I want out of that contract sooner. There's no doubt about that.
Okay.
Okay.
It's nice to hear your voice after so many years.
All right. Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir. May I clear up a misconception? I think that somebody has expressed, I heard this yesterday. At any point in time, there are, there are probably literally dozens of contracts and other documents that are being worked on throughout the city, not just in my office. Tammy doesn't have a copy of every single one of those documents. Tammy gets them, the clerk's office gets them, when they're going to be put on an agenda to come to the council or for your review. But she gets them in and keeps them in as a record of her office. Or if it's something that she's executing along with the, the city manager under his authority. But just because someone asks for a document in the clerk's office and she says she doesn't have it, that's the absolute truth very often. But when she gets a specific request and she knows where to ask for it, as she did to my office, yes, we had a draft of the contract from Mr. Wright. We're glad we shared that. But there's no reason to give it to Tammy until it's in final form for the council's consideration. That's why Tammy wouldn't have it ahead of time.
Thanks for the clarification. Mr. Wright, do you have something further?
I'm going to respond to-
I'm going to respond to a few points made by Mr. Wilson and one made by Mr. Grifanti. The one made by Mr. Grifanti was, I think, just a misplaced criticism of me for going forward on the basis of a handshake with Mr. Browder from OUC. He's right. The handshake did need to become the contract. We had a handshake in November that when we got to the end, we would negotiate terms that would address what would happen if there was a calamitous, catastrophic, overwhelmingly adverse legal action, legislative or court action. That handshake translated into Section 15.11.2, which is now in PPA. It's in the contract. You know, as far as I'm concerned, we did that right. Historical note, this is relevant to comments made by Mr. Wilson. Y'all hired me, you signed the engagement letter on April 16th of last year, 2014. My main engagement was to try to bring the sale in for a landing at that point in time. I went forward, I'll add this anecdote, which I think is really great and apropos. The first phone call I got congratulating me on being engaged, right after y'all had voted that morning, I was getting in my car in my parking lot, my office, the first phone call I got congratulating me was from my friend Wade Litchfield.
From who?
Wade Litchfield, the general counsel of Florida Power and Light Company.
Okay.
And we worked together for the next several weeks trying to get this done. I came up with a workable solution to the long-term contingent liability issue that even Mr. Bryant agreed was workable and was better than what they had. What happened was, at the very end of May, OUC's bond counsel and FMPA's bond counsel got together and they said, "We have conflicts, we have irreconcilable conflicts with OUC stepping into the city's status as a purchaser under the FMPA PPAs." And they said, "FMPA, will you please change your bond covenants?" And FMPA, you know, not unreasonably, in my opinion, said, "No, you know, we went through a lot to get these bonds approved and the covenants approved, and they are what they are, and the bondholders and the trustees all rely on them. We're not changing our bond covenants. OUC, will you change yours?" And OUC, and their bond counsel said, "No, we can't do that." And that was when, that was when the FPL deal created on June 2nd of last year. And that's, you know, where things happened after that. We got the waiver letter in early July, and we started negotiating with OUC at the end of July, beginning of August of last year, and here we are. So that's the history from my perspective. I'm just going to add, I have heard it said a whole lot of times that FMPA hired me, that FMPA selected me. I asked my colleagues at FMPA, and they said, "No, we never told Vero Beach to hire you." You know, that's what I know about it, folks. Regarding the long-term commitment of 100 years that's used somewhat nebulously, I think, I think nobody told anybody in 1984, when the St. Lucie Two project contracts were executed by FMPA and FPL on the one, as one set of contracts, and by FMPA and the St. Lucie Project participants as another whole big set of contracts. I don't think anybody told anybody that was going to be a 100- or 120-year contract. And I'll tell you why. I don't think anybody had any idea that it was going to be that long. I think they thought that St. Lucie Two was going to run for its, I think, I don't know this for a fact, I wasn't there. But I think they believed that St. Lucie Two would run for the life of its license, 40 years, let's say, to 2023, or 30 years to 2013. I think actually, no, I think it was 40. I think they got the license in '73. It came online in '83, '84. So it was a 40-year combined construction and operating license. I thought they thought it would run for 30 or 40 years, and they shut it down using what the then believed to be technology was, which they probably thought would take five or 10 years. I'm not sure what it was. It was probably an entombment, although there was, there was some consideration at that time of taking the plant apart, putting it in storage drums, and doing some different storage thing with the hot parts. What has happened more recently is that the preferred technique for retiring nuclear power plants, permanently decommissioning nuclear power plants, has changed. It's now a process that they call safe store. And the idea is, you take the fuel out, you store the fuel separately, and you let the plant sit for 50 years so that it cools off radioactively. After that 50 years, you go back in and do whatever you're going to do, whether it's entombment, fill it up with concrete, and you've got this thing. Whether it's entombment, or taking it apart and putting the hot parts in permanent storage and entombing the rest or whatever, that's what it is. As we sit here today, FPL has gotten a renewal to their operating license, which I don't think was foreseen in 1984. The operating license now expires in 2043. You add 50 years to that for the safe store cooldown period, that's 2093. That's, what, 78 years from now. And then you've got some number of years after that, you know, five, seven, 10 years after that, to actually effectuate, conclude the final decommissioning. The way the contracts read, and remember, FMPA is an on-the-deed owner of that power plant. They agreed to take on the same responsibility that FPL, as the other on-the-deed owner of St. Lucie Two, has for covering the cost of decommissioning the power plant. And so, yes, and our contracts in turn say that we're in, and all of the St. Lucie Two Project participants' contracts, by the way, say that we are parties to these contracts, and we are part of the project until either the project is, the plant is finally retired, or the debt has been, the FMPA debt has been fully paid off, or provision made therefore, whichever comes last. That's why we're in a 100-year contract. I don't think anybody had any idea that was what was going to happen in 1984, when the St. Lucie Two contracts were signed. The capacity deficiency costs are not the highest cost in the state. At worst, they're the high, at the very, very worst, and I don't think this is what is intended, and I'm going to clarify this with my colleagues at OUC, at the very worst, if OUC was making some incremental purchase at, let's say, $1,000 a megawatt hour to serve some load, and part of that was going to serve us, let's say if they bought one megawatt hour for $1,000, and they bought nine megawatt hours for $100 or $200, which is a pretty high price in peaking times, then one potential interpretation of the words in the contract, again, I don't think they're intended, but regardless, is that we'd have to pay $1,000 a megawatt hour for all 10. There's another provision in the same section that says we pay their actual costs of purchased power to serve us. So my interpretation is, we'd pay nine times 200 plus 1,000. I will clarify this with my colleagues at OUC. But it's not, in any event, it's the highest cost paid by OUC, not the highest cost in the state. And just on the conservation issue, fixed demand costs are, to a slight degree, inherently anti-conservation, as are all fixed costs, because utilities have to recover their fixed costs. When people use less, rates have, other things equal, rates have to be higher. It's really that simple. Point here is that there is no difference between a contract that has fixed costs and a power plant that has fixed costs. If you got fixed costs, you're stuck with them. That's how it is. And fixed costs are, to a degree, inherently in the short run, anti-conservation. There's still significant conservation benefits to customers from knocking the energy purchases off their bills.
Right. Just a question on--
Yes, sir.
You know, in this new contract, we do purchase peaking power from OUC. If we do practice conservation and reduce our peaking load, we can reduce our cost?
Only by reducing the peaking energy purchases. We have to have the 54 megawatts of capacity for which we have to pay. We have to have that to meet our reliability obligations as a member of the FRC.
But we do have the ability to make some decisions in order to reduce our power bills by conserving.
Yes, including the 10 megawatts that OUC has already agreed to let us knock off. Other things equal, our demand, well, our demand today is 95 based on the formula in the PPA. They've agreed, as part of this negotiation that got us to this PPA, to let us reduce it to 85 for the remainder of 2015 and calendar 16.
So if somebody wanted to go into--
And now, we are, we don't get to go below 85, but as load grows, we can shave. And if we don't shave that 10 megawatts through other pro-conservation-type activities, or at least capacity-saving activities, standby generation, interruptible rates, and any other, any other demand-side management or energy conservation measures that we might undertake that would have the effect of shaving peak. If we don't, we're liable to pay additional costs, because we'll cause them to incur additional costs.
So we can start conservation practices after this contract to prevent that kind of thing from happening?
So it's a penalty not to. Yeah.
You can, you can do it, you can do it today before the contract. You could do it, you could do it after the contract, you know.
Well, we looked at that--
I'll be, I'll be, I want to be completely clear on this. There's a bigger incentive to get our billing demand, the variable amount of capacity that we purchase is the base product. We start with our peak demand, we had 15% of reserves, and the peak demand is negotiated between us and OUC. We start with peak demand, add 15% reserves, with a starting point of 165, that becomes 191, minus the FMPA entitlements of 54, sorry, 52, minus Big Blue of 54, or the OUC peaking purchase of 54, in the, under the new PPA. That's 106 total. 191 minus 106 is 85. To the extent that our demand grows, other things equal, and we can keep pushing it down to 85, the incentive is exactly the same as it is today. To the extent that we could hypothetically push our demand below 85 megawatts, the financial or economic incentive to the city to do that is not as great, because we don't save the demand-cost component. But it's just like if we had a power plant.
Well, I know, we'd looked at, when Mr. Richards was here several years ago, we looked at doing peak shaving in order to reduce our costs. But the Orlando Utilities Commission in that contract had a formula as to what we would be paying for power. My assumption now is, is that that formula is somewhat changed in that we have a little more latitude in controlling our peak demand?
The formula is unchanged. The formula starts with the projected peak demand. Actually, it is changed, because we now have the unilateral option to start with a projected peak demand and lop 10 megawatts off that, which we have done.
Right. Okay, so we've got--
So that, it has changed to that extent. Beyond that, it's what I just said. It's the resulting, you add reserves, subtract the FMPA and the peaking capacity, whether it's Big Blue or OUC peaking capacity, and that determines what the demand level is.
Mr. Wright, I have a question for you, and it's tangential. But have you had recently or in the past conversations with Florida Power and Light on ways to get out of the FMPA contract, and what have the results been?
I've had passing conversations with them, I want to say as recently as August. And the answer is, neither side has any new ideas for how to get out of the FMPA contract, how to consummate the sale, which is really the question.
Yes, that is right.
And the point is, the point is how to, the point is how to find what I've been calling a substitute SINE, you know, somebody to take our place under the FMPA contracts without adversely affecting the tax-exempt status of those, of the bonds that support those contracts.
In other words, someone, or some mechanism to replace the OUC--
In OUC's position in the overall FPL transaction.
And they have now, they have come up with no idea, you have no idea, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Can we take like a five to 10-minute break?
Yes. It's now 11:15. Why don't we take a break to 11:25?
That works.
Okay.